Call our meeting to order. And. Thank Julie for being our lone public. Uh, member. The. So, uh, just a real quick role call, uh, Jim Hogan.
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
And Kevin York.
Here.
And myself. So, uh, so we've got our quorum and, uh, second item is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion? Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve the me- the meeting minutes as distributed to the planning board for the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting.
A second.
That, um, all in favor? Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Nope, abstain.
And Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, yeah, so order zero with one extension. The, um. Uh, we're delighted to be joined by Judy Green. And the third item on our agenda is consideration of a letter of support from the planning board regarding the open space and recreation plan. And, um, so, uh, I would just like, uh, as way of introduction to Judy and the, and the plan itself. Um, give a big shout out to Judy, um, and, uh, the Conservation Commission and the town, uh, the town's former conservation manager Rebecca Davis. A thoughtful, comprehensive, uh, well-managed process by Judy, Rebecca, and, uh, the consultant, of course, the Witten. So, um, Judy, do you wanna, um, give a, a quick? Or as long a, a review of the plan as, as you would care to and, uh, tell the board where things stand?
Um, sure. This is the third, um, go around for open space. The original open space plan was in nineteen eighty seven. Um, there was an update in two thousand five. And there was another minor update in two thousand twelve. So this, um, full update was long overdue. Um, the open space plan gives, um, a comprehensive detailed view of our open spaces, our recreational resources, and sets goals, priorities, um, and establishes the guidelines that we want to move forward on. So this process, we had, um, two public forums. One was in April of twenty twenty three and the other was in January, um, of twenty twenty four. We had a community survey that ran from March, um, twenty seventh, twenty twenty three till early September. Um, in between the public forums, the consultants met with, um, most of the town departments and the committees that were, um, affected. It was DPW, the Town Engineer, Rec Department, Health and Human Services, Council on Aging, Disabilities Commission, um, the Youth Council, and the Environmental Sustainability Committee. And they provided a lot of great feedback, um, that's incorporated in the plan. They also, part of this plan was updating the ADA compliance, um, module within it. Um, and as well, they sought input from, um, the different committees. So the plan also incorporates, um, other town initiatives, the master plan, Vision Twenty Thirty, um, the MVP program, the Age Friendly Action Plan, the Bike Ped Plan. And that was important to have it as a more, um, inclusive overall plan. So that's, it's more transferable as we move down the road. We also shortened the number of goals this time to four, which I was thrilled with. Um, I think they're real- realistic, achievable. Um, they support volunteerism, um, equity, inclusion, getting the boards, um, together on open space issues, um, and really setting a good tone as we move forward, um, with the plan. And hopefully, it will be a living plan that is referenced. I know the Conservation Commission is planning to, you know, keep it as a solid reference in their permitting and in their educational, um, resources that they have. But some of the things that have already come out of, um, this process are, um, the Trail Steward Program, which we have several stewards right now. Um, we're in the process of, um, planning for signage and mapping for the conservation areas and for the trails. Um, another part of the open space plan is there are thirteen identified, um, open space areas. And that totals, um, conservation areas, a hundred ninety-eight acres. Sixty-one of the acres are under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. And there's one patch, um, that Paul Reviss, the former planner, used to call the Emerald Necklace, which was, um, what's considered the town forest right behind Maple Way, extending through, um, across Oak Street over Holland Road to JJ Round Park. And that's, um, just over a hundred acres, and that's all tax titled land. So another, um, part that happened during this process was, um, there is a list of properties that are adjacent to conservation areas that are under tax title, including the town forest and all of those parcels heading out to JJ Rounds. They are under title review right now, so the Conservation Commission is going to pursue, um, with the town council, getting some of them under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, just to preserve, um, those lots in perpetuity. Um, there's a new, as part of the Energy Park with the vocational school, there'll be a tree planting area in Mapleway. And there was also two point five one acre, um, land that is going to be under, um, a conservation restriction that's off of, um, Farm Street, adjacent to where the school will be. Um. Also, nature-based solutions are part of this plan in terms of, in terms of stormwater. And there are already a couple of examples of that that the engineering department has undertaken. Um, along Main Street, starting at Gertrude Spalding Park, there's a rain garden there. And as you head down towards BB Cove, there is another rain garden. And they have incorporated a bio-retention area, um, at the improvements by the tennis courts at Betsfield with the new pickleball court. And there's also an adjacent pollinator garden. Um, the new improvements that are scheduled for the Betsfield parking lot, that will include, um, some natural, uh, stormwater elements that Bill has incorporated. So, and one thing, when I talk to the engineering department, when they look at town projects, the first thing they look at is can we use a nature-based solution? The green infrastructure. So that's already part built into, which I think is outstanding, that it's in their forefront for every project that comes, that's a town-based project. And whenever feasible, financially feasible and just, um, realistically feasible, they do incorporate that. And I think that makes a big difference. And it's a great example for the town to set for other projects. Um, cooperation amongst the boards is another thing. We had a few discussions about, um, having joint meetings. I know the Conservation Commission has met on, um, similar projects with the planning board before. But having, um, just collaborative meetings with the boards, just to find out, you know, like the commission has a twenty-five foot setback to, um, the buffer to a wetland. And just the importance of that, how can that, um, be a deterrent in other permitting boards? You know, how does it conflict with some of the regulations that the other boards are held to? So just trying to keep that in the forefront, to try to give some protection to these areas. Um, because we're not going to create any more green areas. So we have to be more mindful of what we have. And then part of that is looking at these conservation areas and seeing what their value is, how are they functioning? Uh, invasive removal is another, um, component that's going to be looked at. The Japanese knotweed is everywhere, the invasive vines. Um, creating more niche areas in some of these conservation spots, um, areas for birding, more passive recreation, things like that, um, highlighting with, um, educational signage about the need for flood storage areas, why that's important, how that functions, um, how that creates habitat for certain wildlife. Um, the Conservation Commission has a speaker series. They're going to have a upcoming one in the next few weeks on, um, beaver management. There'll be one on vernal pools, um, the state is going to give one on the bio map. So these are all things that have come, um, have been rolled in as part of the open space plan. Um, that's really it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, any comments, any input you wanna see, I mean, the plan, it's, has been sent to the state and it's received conditional approval, which is great. It just has, it's just a matter of some cleanup issues at this point.
It certainly opened up to the, uh, the other board members for any questions or comments, yeah, Jim?
So I'll start by just commenting that I think this, the quality of this report is really high. So I'd be very complimentary to, to Judy, you and your, your team who've been putting this together. I think that it's definitely apparent, the level of care and thought. The other observation I would make reviewing the port report. If you go down to the section where you outline the seven-year action plan, I really appreciate how you are identifying timelines and responsible parties such that we can use this as a baseline document of, on a go-forward basis to see how we as a town do when we get to the end of this plan in twenty thirty-one. So overall, reviewing this, I think all the goals that you outline are laudable. I think that, um, if this were to be fully implemented, I would consider it a major success for the town. So I, I just wanna say, you know, really well jet, well job. Really well job done. And, uh, I'm glad that people such as yourself take the time to be this thoughtful.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Very well said. Other board members?
Yeah, to think about a plan like this and to put it into action is a, is really wonderful to see. And there's, so thank you, Judy. There's a lot, and I know it's been, it's been a lot of years in the making with a lot of different, I, I really appreciate the breakdown too of each open space and the time it took to, from Landrigan Field, from Molton Playground, all, and everything in between. It was really good to see. Well, this, the ramp, the handrail is too much, too large of a diameter. That's like great information to feed back to the town to, I, like a lot of these plans, my concern is that it will get tucked away. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that something you said during your, um, um, presentation just now was the connection of all the boards. It's something that I know Paul Reviss tried and, um, Aaron's been working on that. And it's, it's something that I really feel we need. And that might be the best solution because there'll be some, not checks and balances, but I think the conversation between, um, it, it will take that type of an effort, meaning more than just one board to make this happen and keep pushing it. So I, I'd really like to find out how, like, our planning board could, um, take different pieces. And of course, the Bike Ped Plan is so close to my heart, but a lot of it as well with the open space. And I think just really thinking about different points. And maybe the planning board could come up with an itemized list from this, the open space plan to help us when we are reviewing subdivisions and other, other types of, um, projects that are under our jurisdiction. Uh, one comment, one edit. I think, um, Theo's name is missing from the planning board at the beginning. And I, I wasn't sure if that was intentional or if he's in another place, but his, Theo's name is not on there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill. Um, I, I wanna, um, yeah, I really a- appreciated. I really, um, uh, very much liked, uh, the goals and, uh, and the objectives. Um, I also appreciated, uh, uh, identifying potential future funding, uh, sources for so- for some of the goals. Um, identifying which, um, would be through the town itself and other state grants and things like that. So that's, that was very much. Um, Matt or Kevin, any comments?
Yeah, I, I do. I think it's, it's a great resource to have, um, something that does tie the boards together. We can refer to that if we have a subdivision and um, wanna have some connectivity to, you know, we see possible areas where we can connect some resource areas, um, and, and encourage developers to potentially, you know, dedicate some of their land for, you know, to enhance what we have. So I think it's a great resource and, and, uh, I think it's, it's gonna go a long way to, to help the town move forward. So thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate all the work that was put into it.
Just to echo what, what everyone else has said, I, I appreciate the thoroughness of this. Uh, this looks like a really good plan. Um, I especially like section nine, the, the seven-year action plan. One question I had, I'm curious about, um, so the, the first is to kind of promote the awareness of the open space and recreation areas in town. Is there anything that would precede that to promote that this plan was done, to let people in town know how much effort went into it, how thorough it was, maybe really emphasizing that last section with the objectives? Just because I know a lot of times people in town have no idea that something like this was ever done. And I think this is really helpful, especially the section that, that indicates the key leads and support entities so that we can all sort of be held accountable for making sure that this is implemented and goes according to plan.
Right. No, I think that's a good point. Um, it will be out on a social media blast. Um, it'll be on the messaging boards. A bunch of, um, Facebook pages, Environmental Sustainability has a very, um, active group. Um, anywhere and everywhere, we'll try to get the message out. I think that's crucial.
There anything you'd like the planning board to do?
Um. It may be something that, you know, maybe two meetings a year or something like that, you dedicate a section of your agenda for the open space to see if there's a specific goal or a specific aspect of it that you wanna highlight, talk about, um, maybe pursue. Something like that. Because I suggested that for the Conservation Commission as well, to keep it on a few agendas a year, just to keep it in the forefront and remind themselves of the goals and try to work on chipping away at some of them.
Judy, just, uh, one last thing. I, I noticed a minor edit that you might wanna fix. Final, in that section seven for the key of lead support entities, there's SB indicating select board. You might wanna update that to TC for town council.
Yes, thank you.
One area that I think, uh, we can also solicit, um, and just some advice or some coordination will be, uh, ultimately our, our subdivision rules regulation. So, um, it's, so that'll be something to, to follow up with, with you on.
Great.
All right. Um. So, um, you would like, uh, so, I mean, I'm, I'm taking it from everyone's comments that, um, uh, we're, we're very, very happy to issue a, a public letter of support for adoption of uh, of, of the open space and recreation plan. Um, when do you need it? And, um, yeah?
Um, there's not a rush. I mean, sooner is always better and later, but it's still in, you know, it's still in a deliberative process. So I still have to go in front of town council and get their endorsement as well.
Is that meeting scheduled to go to town council?
Yes, it's, um, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, uh, I'm uncomfortable, well, I mean, am- amongst ourselves, I think we could certainly um, circulate a draft and, and, uh, get that approved and, and overgave of, um, in advance of town council.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, um. What's that? That'll be the. We'll shoot for the nineteen. All right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're very welcome, um. Yeah, no, th- this is great. Congratulations again on a
Thank you.
A really, really thorough and, uh, uh, considerate report. So it was really great.
Thank you. Thank you for all your effort and, and the report as well.
Miss, Mr. Sheriff MA?
Yeah.
Uh, I know that we're talking about issuing a letter of support, which I'm full, full in agreement with. Um, does it make sense that designates a specific member of the planning board to take a first pass to that draft?
Um, sure, that's a great idea. Um, uh, would anyone care to join me? Or would anyone care to take the lead?
I'd like to work with you on that, Theo. Um, that so much of this is close to what I feel we've been working on and personally I've been working on for a long time. So, yeah, I, 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 I'm sure it's gonna be like a quick one-page thing, but I wanna make sure we get pieces in there and parts that we wanna express as a board. So, yeah, I'd like to work with you on that.
Yeah, terrific.
And just to make sure too, we should have Sam be our point person and have that way either Sam or Susan can distribute. That way we're not breaking any laws.
Yeah. Good point. All right, terrific. So we'll, we'll aim to get that out and, uh, and circulate it quickly. Thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Um, our fourth item is election of chair and vice chair for, uh, the remainder of this, uh, this year term. So, um, I would just like to say I appreciate the opportunity to be chair for the past two years and your patience as a board, as I've learned the ropes. And, um, and it's really been a, a, a welcome opportunity to get to know town staff, um, and work with staff, um, across, uh, the departments. And, um, so that, that's been a, a, a real welcome, uh, opportunity as well. And I really do have to say, you know, this has been a tough process for the, the planning board. And I'm really appreciative of the attention, the care, the professionalism that, that everyone brings to, to every, uh, item before us, uh, and also that we continue to keep the best interests of the town, uh, forefront and our continued commitment to transparency, um, and open access. So, and, uh, I'm also delighted that I've got another three years on my term uh, to get to, to get to work, uh, with you on these issues and Samantha and Susan. Uh, is there, uh, any, um, you know, the tradition has been the vice chair ascends and, uh, another member of the, the board, uh, would take the role of vice chair. Um, any, any discussion nomination? Consideration.
I'd like to nominate Jim Hogan as for chair.
Second.
Thank you. Great. Uh, Jim, um, if nominated, you know, will not, will not run if elected, will not serve. What's, uh, yeah, that's great.
Uh, if, if elected, I would serve. So, and, and thank you for, uh, for nominating me. It's, it's, uh, it's an honor.
Yeah, agreed. But, but, yeah, much appreciated. All right.
I would, um, I'd like to break tradition only for, and, and Matt, you're welcome to decline. But I would like to nominate you as vice chair, even though this is your last year, I believe. I, uh, look real quick on the site. So, yeah, board member Matt Lowery, April twenty twenty-five. So I know, um, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a lot of years, Matt. So I would like to nominate you as vice chair on your possible last year. So that's obviously up for you to decline. And I know it would buck tradition a little bit, but it's up to you.
If, uh, you know, uh, I'm fine with that. If, if Kevin would, you know, has aspirations for the chair next year or, and he wants to do vice chair, I'm, I'm fine with letting him do that too. But, uh, I'll accept the nomination if Kevin doesn't wanna.
Just to interject, I did think of that and noticed that Kevin is on until twenty twenty-eight. So there is time.
There is plenty of time. So I will second Bill's nomination of Matt for vice chair.
We, we have a, a motion and a second, uh, to elect Jim Hogan as our chair for the coming year and Matt Lowery as the vice chair. All in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Uh, yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I don't think we've elected both in the same time, but I guess that, that could be okay. Works, right? I, um, I don't know.
All right, well, all right.
Usually it's the chair and then the vice chair, and then we have another appointed position.
Right, all right.
Normally, we, we, we vote for them separately, but, but that's fine. And I, I know that for a fact because I always vote against myself if I'm, um, nominated for chair, just for, um, plausible deniability reasons, but, uh,
Well, then I, let's not break tradition. Let's not break with tradition. We can, we can.
Now, it, it's, it's already done. It's, it's not a problem.
That's why I was laughing, because Matt, you technically did vote for yourself there. So.
Yes, that's true.
Susan, please make sure that's in the notes.
Yeah.
Uh, I've never voted for myself, uh, during elections or
No.
So, uh, I guess we can break tradition there. So, good work, Bill.
There you go. Nice charging horse, Bill.
Do that, yeah.
Terrific.
Uh, so, you know, thank you, thank you everyone for electing myself as chair and, uh, Matt as vice chair. You know, I do wanna take a moment at the first thing and really thank Theo for all of his service. Um, you know, I know that there's been a lot of, uh, contentious meetings over the last, um, period of time while we've been evaluating some of, uh, the more controversial proposals in front of the board. I think that you handled them with grace and, um, dignity throughout the entirety of the process. So I think, you know, really truly hats off and thank you for your leadership and for, uh, I'll say your calling voice, uh, to all parties involved. And if Matt, you know, very excited to have you as the vice chair and, um, and look forward to a, a great year with all this board. You know, I think that, um, you know, I think it's a testament to the quality of people on the board, um, that we've got options, uh, all good options, I think, in terms of the people who could be serving. So with that being said, uh, I will pivot to item number five on our agenda, items not anticipated by the chair. Um, and it looks like Mr. Spalding.
Uh, Jim, I have a gavel at my house that I will drop off on your porch from years past when we actually met in person.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, you can have a gavel and, but that'll be good.
I don't know, maybe, maybe one year we'll actually be back in person.
I send my quarterly email to, um, town manager and, um, yeah. So I'll do that again. That's coming up. I think I have it on my calendar for like, um, mid-July to, to send another message.
I, I do know that some meetings are hybrid now.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know how it's chosen which boards or committees get to do that, but, um, I know it's in the process. So perhaps, uh, we can get a clarification on if this board is eligible for that.
I will follow up with that if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
I would strongly advocate to do so.
Okay. And, um, just to, to one more item too, um, we need to appoint, um, the correct, I think it's uh, a pay, it's, what's the role, Matt? The pay person?
It's, it's basically the treasurer.
Treasurer?
Treasurer and, um, and basically clerk or, or we kind of renamed it scribe also, but either one of those.
Right. So it's really reviewing.
That does both.
Right. But it's reviewing anything that comes in as far as, um, that needs to be signed for a payment or a review of an invoice. And that's something I've been doing the last few years. I'm, I'll gladly continue to do it. But if somebody else wants to take that over for the experience, that's fine too. Um, the only task that is reoccurring is to review Susan's um, invoice from the town and approve that and send it back.
Anyone else on the board interested in fulfilling that role? Hearing nothing, uh, I'm going to go ahead and say, Bill, you have, uh, been appointed unless you Hearing nothing, uh, I'm going to go ahead and say, Bill, you have uh, been appointed unless you decline.
No, that's, that's fine, I'll continue to do it, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else have any other items unanticipated by the chair?
Um, yeah, I have one, um, I had brought this up at our last meeting when Attorney McGrail was on that uh, we, kinda needed an update on uh, the Prospect Street uh, Clyde Court project for a closeout and for Lovis Ave for a closeout, both of those are, you know, still open subdivisions. Um, so, they need, at some point, we need to close them out. I know for Lovis Ave, one of those houses has recently hit the market, so I, they're gonna have to do something to connect that subdivision to, to the public way, we, there was a condition in there that um, if that road was not reconstructed by the time, um, that subdivision opens up, that the applicant would have to do it, so that's why I wanna get a, you know, get a status report, update from Attorney McGrail, so if we can try to get, get to that in the next few meetings, uh, I think that would be uh, timely.
In the, in the past, uh, Matt, when these types of items have come up, have we, has the board, reached directly out to Attorney McGrail i- in this case, because he, I'm assuming he's representing both of us if I called correctly?
Yes, he did, he is.
So, would we just reach out directly to him to ask for, for an update?
Yeah, we can say, we, we're putting you on the agenda for, you know, the next meeting, please provide an update. Whether it be uh, written or, or oral, usually it's better if he's in person, we can ask him, so. Um, yeah, we should do that. For a lot of subdivisions in the past, we've had an actual, date, completion date that they have to have it done, we've kind of gotten away from that. So, and these things have been dragging on for a while, I know Clyde Court is pretty much done, there were a few items that needed to be finished. That shouldn't be too heavy of a lift. Again, for Lovis Ave, there's, there's some issues up there that need to be addressed at some point and the roadway needs to be, basically rebuilt before they can even sell that house, so I'm, I'm curious of what they're thinking is right now.
Matt, I've got record of the Clyde Court subdivision ruling, um, can you send Lovis to myself and I will reach out to Attorney McGrail?
Yep, I, I will get that over to you.
Um, I, I actually have them up right now, Matt, the dates I have, the Lovis Ave final plan, from September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, and uh, word document, planning board decision from September twenty-ninth. I could send them over if, if those are the two documents we're discussing.
Yeah, that would be it.
Okay.
I just, I, I reviewed them, I didn't see a date that they needed to be done by, so.
I just looked quick and I didn't see one either, so. Um, I do have the meeting minutes from then as well. Yeah, you know how I like to keep records. Okay, so I'll send these to you, Jim. And Sam, I'll send them to you as well, just to, um, keep you in the loop.
Yeah, really appreciated.
I believe those are the only, the only subdivisions we have, you know, in process right now anyways, so um, it should, you know, until we have others, at least we should always keep, keep track of when these are open and get them to the finish line.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair, I, I've uh, so, two items on, just as heads up, the traffic advisory committee is meeting on Friday, um, and um, I think uh, yeah, um, I think we, there, there's another opportunity for uh, for board, uh, board collaboration. Especially with so, some of the, the things that are, are before us uh, for the second half of the year. And um, are folks going to the, the, the two-hundred, four-hundred quantity power groundbreaking on the eighteen? Knew that those two things were coming up.
Yeah, uh, anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, in that case, I have two items uh, to provide updates to the board, um, the first being uh, MBTA section three A. The town council met yesterday to have a preliminary conversation around the process, uh, now that the warrant item at the Springtown meeting failed and discussing in terms of how to get a, uh, new plan developed such that it would be ready for inclusion in the fall town warrant. My understanding is that no decision was fully made at that meeting, but that there was a desire expressed by the town council for them to be the body that picks up the development of whatever map will go to, to fall town meeting, and then would be presented through the normal course of zoning, zoning process, we would be, you know, reference to our board for our review and then, holding of a public hearing and voting on whether to recommend approval or non-approval of said meeting. My understanding is that the town council has this still on their agenda for the meeting on the twenty-fourth of June, and so I would anticipate, at that time to be able to provide a more full update in terms of the next steps for three A. And then the other item I have is that uh, for um, for the other members of the board is that uh, Attorney Mullen issued a response on behalf of the planning board and the Town of Wakefield, to the Attorney General uh, in response to the open meeting complaint that was uh, discussed at the last board meeting. If, if members of the planning board interested in the result of any of those items, feel free to reach out. Um, but essentially the town is taking the position that no violations of the open meeting law did occur. Uh, anyone else have any other items not anticipated by the chair?
I just wanna, hey, I, sorry, um, I just wanna give a quick heads up that the Housing Production Plan, RFP proposals from, or I guess submissions um, from consultants will be uh, due on the twenty-first, I have two people that, or two consultants uh, slash, consulting teams um, that have already reached out with very specific questions about submitting, um, so I just wanted to give y'all an update on that. Um, hopefully, we will be able to select someone fairly quickly um, and be moving forward and of course I'll, I'll let you know how that process continues to move.
And Sam, who's, who's actually making that, that selection, is it uh, yourself, Aaron and uh, Town Administrator Mayo?
As far as I know, yes, um, if anything else changes, um, I'm, I'm happy to reach out, at last I had talked to, um, Mr. Mayo about that, uh, that was our, our group was the plan um, for reviewing those uh, proposals.
And do we have a sense of how long you're, you're anticipating that production plan, like when would, when would that, development process start and is there a, a thought process in terms of how that interacts with this board?
Um, so, the overall process uh, should be done by February, if not sooner. Um, we wanna give ample time because it is summer, so things get a little bit um, complicated with trying to get people, uh, or at least getting a good representation um, for public uh, comment and whatnot, so. There's um, right now, like I said, the, the deadline or goal to have, is to have everything done by February. Um, as for when it's gonna start, it really depends on how many people respond, um, and how many applications we have to go through, if there's a large number of them, uh, we will have to end up conducting interviews, um, and again, that, that just varies. Uh, the goal is to hopefully get started by the end of July, um, beginning of August with the actual consultant, but like I said, it really depends on how many we get, um, to review because we, of course, want to make sure that we are very well-informed in making that decision with who to move forward with.
Okay, any other questions from other members of the board?
No questions, but one quick update, June twenty-seventh, the Bylaw Review Committee is holding a public hearing, to share a first draft of the zoning bylaw updates. Um, if you're interested in seeing the current status, the BRC website has two versions of it. One is a clean version and one is an edited version that shows all of the track changes that have been made to the document. Um, that one's pretty messy with renumbering and moving things around, um, but probably more helpful for this body to see that one, since you're all familiar with what the previous version looked like. From my understanding, after the public hearing, um, then Attorney Bobrowski wants to get public feedback on that, make any changes if necessary, and then share the next version with Planning Board and ZBA.
Is this draft two on the website?
Technically, he is calling it draft two, it, it's the first draft that's been shared very publicly unless someone joined all of our meetings.
Okay. Okay, any, any other items unanticipated by the chair? In that case, uh, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Theo?
Second.
Seconded by Bill, uh, motion to adjourn, uh, roll call vote, Kevin York?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Theo, no?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. So, thank you everyone for the time and uh, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.